This evening, I would like to remind you all that tonight, we will begin with the continuation of the February 21st Board of Assessment Review meeting. The Board of Assessment Review held Grievance Night on February 21st, 2023, and determined that many grievances failed to provide any information or provided insufficient information to permit the board to make proper determinations that their assessments were illegal, erroneous, or unequal. The meeting was adjourned until March 2nd, 2023, today, to allow these grievants who did not supply relevant information an opportunity to do so if they chose to. The following grievance are not entitled to any reduction of their assessments, and I will list the property owners as such. Eric Chan and Lan Trunk, Peter Dirkovic, the Cathedral of the Incarnation, Genevieve E. Young, Living Trust, Michael and Theanne Ritchie, Josephine and Rosemary Fusco, Robin and Caitlin Henderson, George and Christine Rule, Mohammed Tarahaskan, and Brandon K. Chung and Christina Lee. Do I have a motion to find that the aforementioned applicants have provided insufficient information for the board review to make a determination that such assessments are illegal, erroneous, or unequal, and therefore pursuant to Section 525.2A of the Real Property Tax Law? The aforementioned applicants are not entitled to any reduction of their assessments. So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. That's Tom O'Brien. How are you, Tom? Sorry.
Good. How are you? I'm in, greetings from Seattle.
Is that a movie? I will not, I will now call on village council.
Okay, I just want to first explain the property owners that were listed by the mayor. Each of these property owners were pro se applications. And Tom Donato, the village assessor, looked through those applications. He's the one that made the recommendations for these findings. There's one on there that's a little unusual, and you might ask, why is the Cathedral of the Incarnation on this list of taxpayers who are not entitled to a change in their assessment? That is a reference to an assessment that has been placed on that portion of the cathedral's property, where the equipment is being stored by the MTA. And the case law, as we understand it, is that even if this is a not-for-profit, and even if they're leasing their land to another not-for-profit, the MTA, if the lease is made, is being made at a profit, at more than what the land cost to maintain, that the land is taxable. And we had conversations with the cathedral's attorney about this, and he, he didn't quite buy into that. And we had offered him, Mr. Donato and I offered him some kind of resolution, but he didn't accept it. So at the Grievance Night hearing of the Board of Assessment Review held on February 21, there was, Mr. Donato found that several of the grievances, the three that are listed actually on the, I don't know if you have this, may not. There are three that I'll name that weren't entitled to reductions based on the materials that they submitted, the information they submitted. And that was John and Kathy Letitia at 44 Hilton. Their current assessment is $23,000, and it's recommended that it be reduced to $21,200. Next is Naylien Fernando at 2 Maria Lane with an assessment of $14,000. It's recommended that it be reduced to $12,860. And Zachary and Lauren Truesdale at 46 Yale Street, currently with an assessment of $22,000, and it's recommended that it be reduced to $20,160. And a motion will be in order to find that these applicants have provided sufficient information that the board has determined that the Grievance Night applications are granted to the extent that I just listed.
So move that the report of the assessor and the reductions stated therein be accepted. Second. All in favor? All right.
Favor.
You vote affirmative?
Affirmative, yes.
Mr. Mayor, just so that Mr. Fischberg can respond, the analysis that he has performed with regard to the cathedral, would that analysis be likewise applied to those buildings in the village which are nominally owned by medical facilities or hospitals, but subparts thereof are then being occupied and/or used for commercial purposes in order that the village could recoup and/or obtain partial reimbursement of its taxable base?
Well, it's going to be on a case-by-case basis, and it's something that, you know, we might want to look at. But again, the law does permit a not-for-profit to lease property to another entity if in fact it's a, it's a lease that recoups the expenses that the not-for-profit is experiencing at that facility. If there's a, in this case with the cathedral, the expenses of maintaining that piece of property were minimal, and they were getting a rather large sum of money from the MTA for that lease. But, you know, on a case-by-case basis, we may want to look at some of the other situations that you're referring to, trustee.
Well, that issue has been raised before by this board. So if you want us to formalize our request that you do in fact so determined for the board and for the assessor, for instance, if you have a commercial property that has 100,000 square feet that is owned by a medical facility, yet 25,000 square feet is then sublet to faculty practice, one would think that we may be able to use the protocol you have just said in order to have the assessor make a determination as to what village taxes can or should be recouped.
We'll look into it.
Yeah, we appreciate that because it is something that we've been contemplating because I think people think that a building that is, quote, "a medical facility" is probably the best example that's affecting our village. When you actually dissect the building and see what's actually taking place in the building, there is business taking place that it is not, or should not be flagged as being something that is a charity, for example, or a not-for-profit. We may have to dissect things rather finely, but I think it is a way for us to recoup some of those funds.
All right, I will talk to the assessor and Mr. Javonelli, and we'll look into that for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Mayor, can I just make a fast comment?
Sure.
Trustee Flanagan's husband had surgery today, and she wanted me to let everybody know that he's doing okay. Had a little bit of a problem, but he's doing okay now, and so she's in the city with him, and that's why she's not here tonight.
Sorry to hear that. Thanks, Bruce. I'd like to call upon the department heads now.
I hope he recuperates quickly. Thanks, Bruce.
I'd like to call upon the department heads now, beginning with Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. I still don't have anything on the agenda. Just a little reminder, I spoke about deception law in the past. Last week, there was another one that I closed by. There was another one close by. It's somebody was exiting a bank, and as they were exiting a bank, somebody said there was money on the ground. Again, as they were picking up the money, somebody went in. Another person went in and took the pocketbook, a lot of money and credit cards. And so, again, please be wary of your surroundings. Something like that happens to you, getting your card, just dial 911, and do not fall for that if you can. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next is Village Treasurer Irene Wu Shi on Zoom. Good evening, Irene.
Good evening, Mayor trustees and everyone present. On tonight's agenda, there are no items for the Finance Department, but as you mentioned earlier, we will be kicking off the budget work sessions next Thursday evening at 7:30 PM. I'll be presenting an overview of the budget, and we have three departments that will also be presenting, the Building Department, Fire Department, and Library.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Building Superintendent Giuseppe Javonello.
Good evening, Mayor trustees. The Building Department doesn't have anything on the agenda tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
You then tell us that Firehouse 2.
Firehouse 2.
Has enough room that we could put the engine in without having to go put grease on the top.
Discovery made, right?
Yes, so there was discovery made. Last week, we, last week, we performed probes. The DBW performed probes on the Firehouse 2, and it was discovered that from the underside of the steel girder beam in between the garage doors to the finished floor of the concrete, we have 11/11, 11-inch, 11-foot, 11 inches, which is more than adequate of what we need for the new fire trucks.
Thank you.
I believe the new fire truck is 10/8, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong?
10/8, but we're looking for 11/4 at least.
We're shooting for 11/4. So the structural engineer has the email and the photographs that I sent over last week, as I forward to the board as well. He's going to create some design drawings and some structural details to change that girder beam to eliminate the two columns in the, in the front facade there, and then run a girder beam from basically one end of the door to the other end of the door there. So it's going to be a new steel girder beam across to link the two columns. So that's in right now, where we're waiting for those design drawings.
That's great, great news, Giuseppe.
Thank you.
Any more comments? Next is Recreation Commissioner Paul Blake. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Recreation has one item on the agenda this evening, and that is the proclamation of Friday, April 28th, as Arbor Day here in Garden City, which we will celebrate by planting a tree, most likely out here on the green by the gazebo. It is also one of the requirements to file for Tree City USA designation, and I am happy to report that we found out that we have been approved for Tree City for the year 2022. That's three consecutive years that we were back in the Tree City business. Along with trees, we have our contractor, Northport Tree, will be starting in the next two weeks, planting 122 trees throughout the village. As we always do, we ask our residents, if you receive a tree, please give it a little extra care and maybe take out a bucket of water every couple of days and keep it nice and wet. It's a good time to plant. March and April typically get lots of rain, and that'll help establish the roots and get these trees off to a good start. Other than that, we have a ton of programs coming out in the next two weeks. So everybody pay attention to our website, the Garden City News. We have some terrific programs for preschool kids right up to senior citizens, and they're all going to kick off in the next couple of weeks, and we want you to get involved and enjoy them. Other than that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Did our trees, Commissioner, along Main Avenue and Strawberry Field, maybe help us out with this tree?
We're planning on another planting for late April or May, and that will be to replace a lot of the ash trees that were taken down this thing. And we'll also be planting some trees in areas like you mentioned.
Okay.
Paul, the ash tree situation, are they all gone at this point, or were you in the process for that?
We are, depending on what numbers you look at, we are about a quarter to a fifth of the way through. The last numbers we pulled off the GIS system was that we had approximately 471 ash trees. That's as of the last recording on that system, which was several years ago. We took out 114 this spring, so we're probably a fifth to a quarter of the way through, and we'll be going for another batch of ash tree removals in the fall.
There is one more item that is on your agenda, but not on your agenda because it is written in invisible ink. And that would be the payoff by Chubb Insurance Company for the senior center. If you want to just tell us about it, and thereafter, I will have to suspend the rules and make it a resolution. But you can tell everybody how you went out there and got the big bucks.
We were just relentless. We just dogged them, you know, phone call after phone call. If the board recalls at our last meeting, you all classed a resolution to accept the insurance settlements from Chubb Insurance, which totaled out to $253,499.04. That money has been received, and it has been placed into the insurance reserve account, which is a revenue account. We cannot cut a purchase order from a revenue account. So tonight, we're going to ask for a slight bookkeeping move, that is to move that money from the insurance account into maintenance of the senior recreation center. That, along with some monies that we have in our Recreation Maintenance Fund, we will be cutting a check to Belfour Construction for $284,033.45 to do the repairs on the senior center. As a side note, Belfour, although they have not gotten the purchase order yet, which would, you know, officially engage them, they have been on the site twice this week, along with members of the Village Engineering Staff, Mr. Barone's staff has been out there. We've had Recreation Maintenance Personnel out there, and Felicia, our Senior Center Supervisor, has been out there. They've done a thorough investigation of the building. They are sure that they can get it back in order in a relatively short amount of time. And as soon as we get them that purchase order number tomorrow morning, my suspicion is we'll see workers on the site on Monday. At the same time, the work on the floor is just about done. I think they had about 15 feet more to do this afternoon, and that would have been complete on that project. So it's all coming together, and we hope to have that building back in good condition in a relatively short period of time.
Let me know, Paul, if there's any problems with Belfour. I doubt there will be, but.
I have to be honest with you, I spoke with three people from Belfour, and everyone has just impressed me. They're very thorough, they're very easy to work with, and they seem very determined to get in and out, which is high on my hit list.
Yeah, I expect that.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks.
Next is Superintendent Public Works, John Barone. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Tonight, DBW has five items on the agenda. The first item is Item 3. Board approval is requested for the following two transfers. Item A, the transfer of $29,768 from contingent for the purchase of three temporary speed humps that have been approved by the Traffic Commission. Item B, transfer of $18,150 from contingent for the repair of sanitation truck number 212. Item number four, board approval. Board approval is requested to declare an emergency and to engage Philip Ross Industries to replace the existing blowers and to construct a new blower building for wells number 10 and 11 for a total cost of $925,000. The blowers are used to treat for volatile organic compounds and are in need of replacement. They have passed their useful life. The loss of one blower would result in the loss of both wells. The operation of these wells are vital for the village to provide potable drinking water and to maintain system pressures. Item number six, board approval is requested to declare AfterMouse.com and Intelligent Goal Systems as a sole source vendor for the purchase of technology equipment as part of the Library Children's Room renovation project. Item number seven, board approval is requested to award the bid of assorted traffic signs as outlined in Items A through D. Award of each individual item to the different vendors is dependent upon compliance with the bid specifications and the unit pricing bid. Mr. Swazi will be speaking with regards to item number five on tonight's agenda, as it requires some modification. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So question on number four. Did we not know this was happening? Why is it an emergency?
It is an emergency. We had some problems with the blowers towers last year. We were able to fix them, make repairs, and get them back up and running. It's now brought to our attention by H2M that they are in definite need of replacement.
I can jump in on this, too. First of all, thank you, John. The last summer, we had a failure of the blower well 11. I mentioned this story in the previous two budget sessions to the board, that we're putting in $53 million worth of AOP equipment at all of our well sites, and we have, the rest of the water system is 30, 40 years old. Not only the buildings themselves with concrete and ceilings falling. We have booster pumps. There's so many moving parts. Blower, the blower well 11, when it went down, we lost supply. We lost pressure. Luckily, at the time, we had the interconnect with Hempstead open. But there's also a question of fire safety if we can't deliver water to that side of town, which is one of the reasons we're upgrading the water main over there on Stewart Avenue. So well 10 is of the same age. When it failed last year, I asked H2M to design it. One of the other problems with the blower, as it exists today, it's in a prefab building, which is squeezed between the PAT, the packed erosion tower that removes volatile organic compounds and VOCs, and Freon, which you cannot drink, and between the tank. The new building would be a brick building on the other side. So we want to do well 10 at the same time. If we lose well, we lose well 11, and well 10 is up. It can run alone, but it won't give us the supply we need. If we lose well 10, well 11 can't run under Nassau County Health Department rules. They both have to run together because there's a nitrate issue over there, which comes from fertilizer. Even though the numbers have been coming down, they want us to blend the two wells. So, so we can't, you know, it's designed now. The question is, do we award it as an emergency now and get it repaired by June in time for the pumping season? Or do we take a chance it doesn't fail and do it in the fall after the pumping season? I did talk to Stan Carey, our new incoming water superintendent. He agrees with the emergency situation. He is familiar with it. In the future, we're not dealing with AOP system rollouts and lead issues, and someone's looking at this full-time. We could probably plan some of these 30, 40-year-old infrastructure upgrades a little more smoothly. But this time, a request is to treat it as an emergency. It is being funded out of the water department surplus as well, so no additional funds when we need it or taxpayer funds.
Mr. Swazi, by way of clarification for those that may not necessarily know it, the terms "declare an emergency" does not mean, pardon me, guys, red lights and sirens. What it basically means that the village has the opportunity, once it declares an emergency, to suspend the normal protocol of collective negotiations and competitive bidding. And by suspending competitive bidding, you're then able to shorten the time between the actual need and the ability in order to get the contractors in place.
Yes, it's so, just for the public's consumption, both wells are operating right now. The problem is, if the blower fails, we can't use the well because we won't, we can't make the water pass the health standards we need to supply it for drinking. So the emergency allows us to bypass the bidding process, which could take two or three months, which puts us well into the pumping season and beyond. So, and the person we want to give it to, Philip Ross Industries, also known as PRI, they've done all but one of our AOP systems. The one AOP system they didn't do was done through competitive bidding because we had a time window which wasn't so much pressure, and that AOP system was installed incorrectly. It's a Canadian-built system, so the neutral line is different than the American neutral wire. And all the electronics in there fried. We had to have it repaired on somebody else's dime. But nonetheless, PRI has been, they are up to their neck in water, and they're a good vendor, and H2M, you know, pushes them to make sure we get the best price. So they're on, they're in town now, they're on, they can be on the site immediately.
I have a question. So the existing blower failed?
Yeah, it's the way the towers work, the packed erosion towers, is the water is, I'm not an engineer here, but the water is put through a high-velocity blower, which separates the loosely-held volatile organic compounds from the H2O, and then it passes on into the tank for distribution. So without that blower, the water can't go through that final treatment, if you will. It's, we already, we've done all the AOP stuff, we've done the chlorine, but we can't do the final VOC clean.
But I'm trying to figure out, was there a maintenance report last year of the blower? That suggests now that it's failed? Was it, for example, what was the useful life of this blower?
I don't, I don't, I can't answer that right now, but it's about 30 years old. It doesn't owe us anything.
So that's pretty old.
And the.
Piece of equipment, especially a piece of mechanical equipment.
It's not the only place in the system. I noted this, I noticed this when I was taking a tour of the plants a couple of years ago. I noted that the rust in places, the age of the buildings, and I made a note to tell my operators and H2M that we need to start cataloging this. Mayor, this also falls under, although not exactly the same, the thing we were talking about with the Building Department, making Mr. Javonello responsible for the facilities of maintenance. In this case, this is both a mechanical feature and a building. So, you know, the three little pigs, the straw in the steakhouse didn't stand up and the brick one did. We have a prefab building, and now it's falling apart, and this is a new solid brick building less.
I'd have been alarmed if this was a 10-year-old blower. But 30 years old, that's way past most mechanical equipment lifespans.
So well 10.
And especially the force it's used to separate the materials in the water. Again, this is terrible.
These blow at high-speed RPMs. The thing is, well 10 is of the same age, and just because it didn't fail last summer doesn't mean it's not imminent, so.
So we need a new blower. That's what you're saying.
And building, and building.
Hopefully, the new water superintendent might be able to alleviate some of these emergency repairs and something ahead of time.
The problem is, and that's why in Mr. Javonello's budget, he's presenting on the 9th, we've added a head count in there. The thing is, we're reactive by nature, right? You know, we can't, we can't plow snow before it falls, but we can repair buildings before they fail. We can repair equipment before it fails. We can look at the natural life expectancy and also make sure the proper maintenance occurs at the proper intervals so that these things, we get the max out of them, and we fix them on time so we don't end up in an emergency situation. If we don't do this now, there's a good chance we'll be, it'll fail in the summer, and we'll declare an emergency then, because we won't be able to use the wells.
Let me explain. You got your money's worth out of 30 years. You absolutely did. So I think it's a good move to get this thing done and fix it so we have water for the residents.
And well 10 and 11 are our most productive wells. If we were, if it was oil, we'd be rich.
Anything else, John? Any other questions?
I just want to comment. Is trustee comment, period?
No, no.
Oh, John, are you not done? I'm sorry.
We're running DPW.
Oh, you are done? Okay.
We have some other people to speak. Gary, you're next.
Sorry about that.
Good evening, Gary.
I have nothing on the agenda, but at the last meeting, we were asked to look into local law to regulate transient rentals and also rentals of residences generally. And my colleague Ariel Roenberg has taken charge of that and has looked into it, and where there are a number of issues that we probably need to discuss with the board before we start fashioning a local law. So we're prepared to talk about that today, although it looks like we're light on board members tonight. But this can be done in a meeting with council. It's not an executive session. It's another exception to the open meetings law, which is called a meeting with council. And we're prepared to have that discussion tonight. Or if you want to wait till you have more board members present, we'll be happy to do it at the next meeting.
I think trustee Flanagan brought this up, so I think we would.
Yes, she's not here.
Did it?
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Last but not least, Mr. Ralph Swazi, Village Demonstrator. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, trustees. Good evening, members of the public. Mr. Barone alluded to number five. It required a little more explanation. I did, and just to note to the public, I did send this information to the board in an email this afternoon to alert them to this. Item number five is really a simple request in the fact that we're asking Intelletech to reinstall the cameras that were removed during the Library Children's Room construction project. During the project, when the project was conceived and designed, little details like that occasionally get missed. You know, having someone pay someone to take them off and put them back. And then, by the way, some of the cameras they took off were analog cameras, not modern digital cameras that are much more useful for safety and surveillance. So that's what this is about. But the real issue here is the two items we want to add to this, which is an item to raise the library capital budget, which is right now $1,298,624. I want to raise it by $24,000. So I'm asking the board to raise the capital ceiling, and then I want to.
And then I want to transfer $24,000 from the village's contingent account to the library children's capital project. I had spoken to Treasurer Irene Wu about this. The reason this is important, because when the library project was conceived and just before it got started, COVID hit. We had supply chain delays. We had cost increases. Every penny of that budget is needed and has been impacted. And back on December 15, 2022, we were alerted to the fact that the design team had failed to include in the budget the replacement of the computer data ports that are needed in the new placement of everything. Because because the people doing the work are on the state contract, so they left it out of the budget. So the board did vote on December 15th to allow that work to occur. But we didn't put money in the budget, which impacted the stuff in the budget that needs the money. So we're just correcting by this addition tonight, raising the capital, bringing the money over to fund that December 15th work. So there will be money left over to pay this $10,000 tonight. And when everything all evens out at the end of date tomorrow, Mary Ann and the library will still have about just shy of $6,000 for any other small change orders. But the work is substantially complete. I'm not, there may be other requests for funds, but not for the construction itself or maybe for some technology things coming down the pike. But this will help us get those cameras back on the wall and and put the funds in place. So that was the modification to item five. The second thing, Mayor, trustee Trina already alluded to, and speaking to Mr. Blake, we need a suspension of the rules to do that bookkeeping transfer. It's not new money. It's just getting the money in the place we can cut the PO against it. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for Ralph? Chief. Chief is on vacation.
That is correct.
And you're filling in?
I am filling in for Chief Purn this evening. He does extend his well wishes. Just want to say good evening to everybody. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that anyone has. If I cannot answer the question for you, I will do my due diligence to get back to you with the answer.
Thank you. Are there any questions? The chief?
I just wanted to make a statement, Mayor, if we're finished with the department.
Yeah, I'm opening it up now for trustees to have any comments.
Okay. I want to say that every one of the employees who were voted raises last week were well deserved. What was not so right was the way it was done. This was a matter to be voted on in an executive session. It has never been done that way where it was not put in an executive session. It should never be done that way in the future. I respect the employees' privacy too much to have that ever happen again. And it certainly could cause internal problems within the offices themselves. That's it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I do. So apologies for missing last week's meeting. I was teaching after watching the video. It seems like I missed one for the ages. Lots of open discussion, which was nice. Again, that's part of what we do as a board. I was surprised, though, when I read the article in the Garden City News the following day that trustee Trina put in around leadership matters. And I agree completely that as a board, right, we're obligated to serve the village and to work with the executive staff and help, you know, direct things and items that they work with. There's no debate about that. I agree that transparency is a good thing, right? And we do work with the executive staff essentially. And we thank you very, very much for all of your, all of the work that you actually do. I agree with trustee Chester in the sense that, you know, discussions of performance, excuse me, discussions of salaries is extremely, extremely sensitive subject. And discussing in public to me is never acceptable. But with that in mind, and in the in the spirit of transparency, I have a question for trustee Torino. Did you have knowledge or involvement in the creation of a letter that Cosmo sent to Mary's employer? You've been silent on it to date and just a question.
I will still be silent because it's not on the agenda. Well, by the way, the what your article reading now is what was sent to me by Don McLeod. So quite candidly, are you reading Don McLeod's letter or?
No, I don't, I don't think, I don't
No, not released yet.
Trustee, did you want to finish, Larry?
No.
No. We're just somewhat concerned that your silence is on an issue that certainly you're you're never at loss of word for words that we know of. And in this particular case, you were, and we were just curious as to why.
You can remain curious.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Well, I guess I'd say that I agree with trustee Chester trustee Marciano, that the these salary adjustments and putting that on the agenda was absolutely wrong. Should not have been done that way. It was one of the reasons that I objected to it. That whole significant raises with no trustees, an executive session to discuss the village administrator the different employees. I thought the way the salary thing was done last meeting was wrong, disappointing. And that was part of the reason I objected to it. I don't think things like that should be put on the public agenda. It's it's common knowledge that we discuss those things in executive session. And it was very disappointing to me. And I agree with trustees Chester and Marciano that it was done absolutely wrong and should have been done in executive session.
Can I make a comment? I thought we did have an executive session in August of last year to commence this analysis. It was in August of last year.
More importantly, not only was this issue raised in August, all the information, and this issue was raised by me in emails to the trustees repeatedly in September, October, November, and December. More importantly, there was a request made by you for documentation. That documentation was assembled by the village and was in fact circulated with all the trustees prior to the vote. Now, with regard to executive session, I'm certain that counsel will correct me if I'm wrong. But everything that the village does has to be in public unless a motion is made for executive session. Since no motion was made, a vote can be called and a vote was approved. So while you may not have liked the protocol, it was correct.
I mean, obviously, some of what you just said was not true. The documentation I wanted, I never received. It was never included in the attachments of yours, which were simply cost of living adjustments based on the fact of when the last raise were. It was as if the village payroll was a form of social security and you were going to make adjustments just for the cost of living. It was a wrong way to provide people with salary increases. And it had no reflection and no component of discussions by the board of individual employees. It was the kind of thing that's wrong on so many levels. But I'm not gonna, I think my position is clear that it was amateurish and procedurally inept and done in a fashion that was sort of a lake will be gone. Everybody's superior. Everybody gets the same adjustment and no reflection of a thorough discussion of different employees. If I could just make a correction, trustee Torino. Yes, it was brought up in August, was discussed at an executive session, and we did not come to any conclusion. As far as emails, every month after that, I reviewed all your emails. And the only email reminder we got was in November, and and that was it. And if you wanted this to be discussed again, it should have. And we did recommend an executive session. We did not vote on it here, but we did recommend it. Several of the trustees did, and you chose to ignore that.
Any other comments?
I have a, I have a comment if you can hear me.
Yes, yes, this time.
Yeah. You know, I respect everybody's opinion, Bruce, Charlie, and Larry. I will say I was satisfied with the documentation, the numerous documentations that we received. And I was very pleased that we moved ahead with the increases. I think they were all well deserved. I looked at the numbers and I didn't see anything that I felt based on doing many salary reviews in the past, you know, giving increases and so on. They were well deserved. Many people didn't have increases for three or four years. About four of the executives have contacted me before before this saying that they were troubled, that they weren't getting increases. It was a morale problem with some of them had other offers that were pending. So anyway, I I respect everybody's opinion and all should have opinions. It's good, healthy dialogue. But I'm very pleased and happy for our our village employees that we moved ahead on it.
I am pleased as well as I'm sure trustee Kelly and Marciano, Tom, but that's not the point. The point is, it should have been discussed in executive session. This is a very sensitive issue. Now the employees know what each other are making. I don't think that's, I don't think that's good for office morale. And that's something you should think about.
Yeah, I did think about it. And I was okay with the way it went forward, Bruce, but I respect your opinion.
Any other comments? Want to move on? Okay, one. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? Please come up to the podium at this time regarding agenda items. Any comments on Zoom, Karen?
Any residents on Zoom?
I have a comment. I have a comment. Robert Vassalotti, 32 Brixton. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. And I have a comment on the signage. I forget the item number.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
There was an item on signage. Not sure of the item number.
Number seven.
Yeah, okay. So there is, there's probably like six pages of signs all around the village, which I think is obviously, you know, standard procedure. But I guess my question was if this includes signage for the Maryland Main Avenue area? Because I believe that that area will need a lot of signage for parking and stop signs and various directional arrows, et cetera, et cetera. So I was just curious if that package did include that, you know, Mead Brook to Nassau Boulevard area, or if that'll be something else that'll be looked at in in weeks to come.
Ralph, can you answer this or?
Mr. Vassalotti, good evening. Mr. Vassalotti, we have a sign shop down at the DPW yard, which has hundreds, if not thousands, of different shaped signs and blanks. And we just got a new machine where we can cut our own vinyl. So this, this is just raw material that allows our sign guys to respond to replacements or new sign requests that emanate from the public or the traffic commission. So Maryland Avenue, in that respect, does not require any special type of signage, raw material. It'll still be U-channel posts and and rectangular or square shaped signs with some color vinyl and printing on it, which in some cases is yet to be determined. So we don't have to make a special order for a particular street, including Maryland Avenue. It's just a matter of raw materials that keeps us in good supply to repair any damaged signs or add new ones as needed.
Okay, great. That's that's terrific. Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
You're welcome, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Oros, would you like to say something?
Yes, good evening.
For the audience? Let's go with Bob and then we'll go to
Okay. All right, thank you. I assume that the that the fire, the fire engines are going to be voted on tonight. I mean, it's part of the agenda. It's number one on the agenda.
Is it strong? Yeah, it is. It's going to be voted on.
Okay, now, there's two question, actually, three questions I'd like to ask. I heard, what is the useful life of these trucks?
We have chief Thornton can respond to your question.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Oros.
Right, thank you.
The apparatus would be 20 years, give or take.
Okay. Now, what is the length of the bond?
Mrs. Wu is on the on the Zoom, but I believe it's the bond is for 20 years as well.
Okay, good. Now
Is that correct, Irene?
Yes, the maximum amount of years that we can finance the bond is 20 years. The village can choose to finance for less years, but the maximum amount is 20 years.
So so it'd be 20 and 20 then. Okay. Now, you also, you also indicated that you're going to have to redo some refurbishing to accommodate the new trucks in firehouse number two. Does this refurbishing have to be done in the remaining two firehouses? And at what cost?
The question you're asking is if the refurbishment is required in the firehouses. I believe Mr. Juvanello mentioned that earlier, but not maybe in the context you asked the question. The headquarters and fire station three over at Clinton can accommodate the new rigs. And probes were done by DPW this past week. And the the beam that goes across the front of the firehouse can reach a height of 11 feet, 11 inches, which is more than a foot above the required height of the new rigs.
As long as I got you on about the firehouses and whatever. I'd like to go back to a to a survey that was done back in 2018. Existing conditions of the firehouses that was conducted by a firm called Cameron. And the results of that were that between the three firehouses, there were something like 93 issues pertaining to serious issues, poor issues and and whatever. At a cost to accommodate or or remediate these issues at almost $7.8 million. I'm wondering whether anything has been done and have any of these issues been addressed? Or or are they just, you know, going on with time?
So I'll try to answer that. I'm not sure my answer will be complete, Mr. Oros, but if you follow up with me, I will, I will follow up with you on any specific questions. In 2018, I brought that the need for that study to the board. At the time, we were looking to establish the condition of the firehouses and what actions could and should be taken. Some of the items have probably been taken care of with regards to the penetration of water at Edgemere two. We've had leaks at Firehouse three at Clinton, which repaired. There is some internal design money is put aside for Firehouse three, which we have not acted on yet, which is probably this next fiscal year we'll work on it. Firehouse two, a lot of the issues of Firehouse two have our moot now because it's, we've remediated it and brought it down to basically its bare bones. Some of those costs in there also, I don't have the study in front of me. But at the time, we were also talking about accommodating new engines and ladders. And some of their solutions required adding on buildings such as at the edge of Edgemere. They put a rectangular building perpendicular to the existing building that would exit onto Edgemere Road. They were concepts, they weren't design plans, but they estimated cost for that that building, I believe, was like $3.6 million. So it was a mixed bag of things that had to be done, that should be done, and that could be done. I'd be happy to sit down at any time and go through the report, maybe every other page, not page by page. But if I can help you out with more information, sir.
I mean, I'm just wondering where we are in on the calendar as far as correcting some of these problems at the fire station. I'm just wondering where we are in in on the calendar as far as correcting some of these problems that the fire stations have. I have the report and I've read the report, so you don't really have to go into it, except for the fact that I don't know where we are. As far as repairs or accommodations for these issues.
Well, at the time, at the time, headquarters was undergoing construction. And some things have been fixed in there at the time. There were some leaks, like I said, Fire Station three, which been repaired. There were some interior things need to be resolved. We've got the generator there. Fire Station two probably had the most severe problems and is probably the oldest of all the structures. And that was the focus of of prior boards. With regards to. Repair or tearing it down and building a similarly looking building, which this board changed direction on. To keep the historic structure and reduce the cost and at same time through engineering initiatives. Make the building functional in the modern world. So like I said, I'm sure those ninety things, a good cross section of them are moot at this point or no longer.
Let me interject one thing. Edgemere Firehouse, there was mold remediation, there was asbestos removal, mason repairs and roof repairs. It stabilized the building and the building is now safe for occupancy. Before you cannot use that building because of the mold and the asbestos. Now it's a usable building. Now architects, I believe, are working on the design. Probably after reuse of that building, repurposing it, and that's the next step. So there was money spent, but not as much money as was originally projected by that conditions report. That conditions report was way overblown.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Stimmer.
Leo Stimmer, sixty seven Huntington Road. I'd like to ask a question about item four, the Clinton Road Plant, Wells ten and eleven. Mr. Swazi, at any time, was the filtration system down? Was was raw water ever pumped or?
I'm sorry, next begin.
Wells ten and eleven, you talked about you you want to replace the blow or it's not clear to me. At any time, was the filtration system at Wells ten and eleven was that down? Was raw water ever pumped?
No, no, we we meet all we've we have met all health standards that that well could not run without that blow. When the blow was down, the well was down. So nothing is going on to distribution.
Thank you.
Any other comments on agenda items? Karen, anyone on Zoom? Move on. First of all, business is the approval of the minutes of the previous board of trustees meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty first, twenty twenty three, board meeting.
I'll make a motion. We approve them.
Second, all in favor?
Affirmative.
Affirmative, except for Larry. Thanks. Let's move on to the formal agenda. Let's move that. Hold on a second. Number one, I just moved that the item be voted on.
Right. Tom, did you not make a request to have this removed from the agenda or her and or discussion in a couple of weeks? Or you have you pulled back on that?
Yeah, let me let me give a quick update. Thank you, Bruce. So first of all, you know, I had the privilege of serving as a fire commissioner last year. And which included, you know, working with the fire safety committee, which was over twenty experts and which I believe you all know. So when I look at this, Bruce, and I'll answer your question in a moment, when I look at this, the. I look at getting the three engines as a must based on the recommendations, not a nice to have or a plus. And the safety of our residents is paramount, but also the safety of our firefighters. So if we go with the three engines, as I mentioned in, I wrote to, just so everybody knows, I wrote to all the board of trustee members. Which part of which was what Bruce just Chester just referenced. So the when I look at this and based on the recommendations, the input. And also talking recently with. Some of the committee members. As well as the fire chief, current fire chiefs and former fire chiefs of Garden City. It is clear that moving on this would make our fire department more effective, more efficient. And also it brings the most important thing is bringing water to a fire. So it would be quicker. And as I mentioned, in thirty seconds, a fire can double in size. I have been in many fire situations as commissioner and also some this year. As Chief Thornton will tell you, and when you're looking at these situations and the bravery of our department putting their lives at risk. It's it's something else. The adrenaline is flowing. There's a lot of muscle memory as we talk about. So I think standardizing the apparatus for all of them, as per the unanimous recommendation of these experts. I think is very important to move forward on. I think we as a board have a moral obligation for the residents and the firefighters to move ahead on this. I want to repeat that. We as a board, I believe, have the moral obligation to move ahead on this. For our residents and the firefighters. They literally put their lives at risk every day. Right now, based on our each each rig from different manufacturers, it requires training on each rig. Separately, synchronizing it, all our firefighters will be trained on one rig. This includes the chauffeurs, the drivers of each of each engine. So right now, the drivers, they're trained and qualified to drive. One engine. They're also trained on the other regions, but they're most and Chief Thornton, I spoke to him about this there and also Chief Pern. They're most used to using the truck that they drive all the time. All right, so in the past. When we had paid fire fire department, they had a separate truck chauffeur for each truck. That followed when they rotated around the village, that chauffeur stuck with that truck. So they were they were used to driving that truck. If we have one standardized truck when we get it and it's going to take some time, this will alleviate the training. And the speed to which we can put water on a fire. So I think it's paramount that we move ahead. I was going to look to move it across and then I had a. Ralph, you know, our 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 village administrator, Ralph Swazi contacted me and we're on a deadline to move ahead. So I'm okay with voting on it tonight. I'm looking for all my fellow board of trustees members to support it. I think we we it's it's something that we must do to save, to possibly save lives in these situations. We've had fires where, you know, we've had terrible outcomes and I think we don't want anything. To. To occur as far as a, you know, a bad outcome in the future. And Chief Thornton, is there anything that I said that is not accurate?
No, I think you covered it. Thank you.
Yeah, I just would like to read a note from trustee Terry Deegan. As many of you know, trustee Deegan is the chairman of the finance committee. And his statement is as follows. As we are in the budget session, I have seen numerous increases in requests by almost every department. The request from the fire department.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me read that. Thank you, Bruce. This is a statement from trustee Terry Deegan. As many of you know, he's chairman of the finance committee. His statement is as follow follows. As we are in the budget season, I have seen numerous increases in requests by almost every department. The request from the fire department is one of many new requests. I feel it is not financially responsible to approve the purchase of three new trucks. Some have said, we can just bond it. It's not a solution. My suggestion is to purchase the one truck on order and let the next. Board of trustees decide the direction they want to go after they have adopted the new budget. We were asked to be good stewards of residents, tax dollars. I cannot support these expenditures. Now, I I have a few questions for Chief Tom. Just correct me if I'm, you know. Currently, we have four trucks that are pumpers and that's the two thousand and nine Spartan pumper. The Seagraves pumper. The two thousand fifteen Ferrari pumper. And the multi-use two thousand eighteen Ferrari Quint. They all can operate as there are three of them, obviously, are operating in pumpers, but the fourth one can operate as well. Is that correct?
Correct. So we have three engines and we have a ladder truck with a pump on it.
Okay, right. And that's the two thousand eighteen.
Correct.
Correct, good. Now, obviously, the two thousand four is kind of, as they would say, the end of its shelf life.
Correct.
So that's the one that we would need to replace with two thousand fifteen pumper, you know, as soon as we can and put it in order for it. I think in terms of standardization of the. Fire fleet, I think we can do that over time, over short time, is my feeling. And the impression I got from talking to the chiefs is your number one concern is the training facility. That's going to be the best way I would think to help recruit. Would you say that's correct or?
I would not say so much for recruitment, but more for training to offer the most optimal situation for members to train in and obviously in the safest conditions.
And we have that or will have that in the budget for approximately four million. I think one million has already been spent to do the cement work at the site of where we want to have that trains trading center.
It's putting it for the capital budget.
Right, exactly. So that I think we need to move forward with. I would suggest we order that truck, that one of the pumpers, almost immediately. And as in terms of Tom's comments, we're all concerned about the safety and welfare of the village as well as the firefighters. But we also have to worry about the tax consequences for residents. Particularly our young families that are here. And frankly, are seen as citizens who are trying to stay in the village. So the fire department is certainly a top priority, but I think at this point. At least in my opinion, you know, we go forward, we order that truck. And maybe we consider on the on the upcoming budget to put in for for the second second truck. That's.
Chief Thornton. Your committee has done tremendous. Excuse me, Tom, I'm speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Couldn't hear you. Put your microphone up.
There's your committee's done a lot of research on this. I don't know how many hundreds of hours you've spent doing this analysis. Can you give us some more information background? Because I've heard that the purchase of the three fire pieces of apparatus. Would cause would cause a savings of eight hundred thousand dollars if they're purchased together, right? That would give a standardization and save the village money, make a safer. The training facility, of course, has to be done to some, and it's a modular training facility, by the way. So that would be very, very good for the firemen to train on and also would possibly attract volunteers, which we in desperate need of. And then obviously the restoration of the firehouses. That was what the report said, I believe, right? It was a three-pronged recommendation. So I'd like to know more about the analysis that was done to purchase these fire fire engines. Why I think the recommendation is to go to Marion, they're the manufacturer I think you're leaning towards.
That's correct.
And the amount of money we're going to be saving.
So I'll start from the beginning. The committee was formed back in June. Committee was formed with members who had knowledge and background with the engine operations. They did an assessment of what we have in the village and what we're looking to accomplish. They met they met with several vendors across the island. They came to them with what they were looking for. They went out to different fire departments with apparatus. They went even all the way up to Connecticut to look at a fire truck as well and different vendors across the island as they got additional information. Not only on the fire apparatus, but also the the warranty and the service that comes with the apparatus and to see how much. What benefits we would get from that. The committees met again. They met again with the vendors and they narrowed down their searches for the apparatus that they determined. In regards to this eight hundred thousand dollars, I'm not sure where that number is coming from. I can talk with Chief Pern to figure that out, but I cannot say. We're confident where that number is regarding. I know that multiple engines are purchased at once, that there is a reduction in the price, but that exact number I cannot tell you right now.
That's what that's what Chief Pern mentioned to me, so I want to make sure that's accurate.
That I cannot confirm or deny.
Can I just comment then? Because I talked to Chief Pern about this and he did provide documentation to the board. The there's a price lock that Marion is putting on this equipment they've been holding for a while. And. The if the price lock goes away, the price of the truck immediately jumps up to a million seventy thousand dollars, about about seventy one thousand dollars. And there'll be quarterly price increases in the range of ten to fifteen percent. Percent, which is where the eight hundred thousand dollar number plays out over time. Also, the delivery schedule of three hundred and ninety days melts away. In Chief Pern's documentation, he sent the example of a fire engine, I think it was a Ferrari and a nearby company made Floral Park. And showed the purchase price and the acceleration of costs without a price lock. So those examples, real world examples he provided, that's where the number came from. I that's the only information I have.
That was in the email that was sent by Chief Pern on February fourteenth.
Yes.
And more importantly, or one of the considerations. I am presently both the fire commissioner and before I was on the fire safety committee. And going back twenty years, I was also a firefighter. And personally experienced how quickly a fire can get out of control. If you don't have water to put it out. And we have other circumstances that are impacting on the village. But more importantly, with regard to having three engines, they can be rotated depending on which barn or firehouse they're put in. Which would then extend their utility. So if you wind up running an engine out of one firehouse more frequently. You can then rotate and expand on their lifespan. The lead time of fire engines right now for this particular item. Is the shortest that I've seen on any of the prospective purchasers of engines by at least twelve to fourteen months. So the theory about buying an engine now. And then later on down the road, getting another engine. Does not take into consideration that there will be an increased price. As well as an increased lead time because you go to the back of the bus. So to speak. In this particular case, by buying three engines, we are accelerating our ability. To formulate the fleet and standardize it. As well as getting a quicker delivery time on those units. And as anybody knows, if you buy in bulk, there is a savings. And in this particular case, it's an extremely significant savings.
Chief, I don't know that that has been verified. You just said that the eight hundred thousand in savings. Do you think if we just immediately order one, as we'd like to do. It would hurt the lead time that they're talking about and getting this engine prepared and ready to go?
Just to clarify that, you're saying if we just order one engine now and then order another engine down the road?
Yes.
I'm not sure what it'll be like down the road. I don't know how production will be.
No, I mean, even for the if we order one now, would that affect the lead time they're talking about? Which I think is what three hundred ninety days, something like that?
I think once you place the order, then the rig would go on to the line and start being built.
Okay, all right.
If I.
Let me finish, Tom.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I have a delay here.
Let me finish, Tom. Okay. Well, again, my question is that, you know, trustee Torena was talking about the lead time and that would be accelerated buying three at one time. Would that honestly be the case or would just ordering one? I don't, I would not think that would affect the lead time, but would you?
I don't know how the production works exactly in the factory, but I believe once a fire truck goes on the line, it starts being built.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Yeah, trustee Chester, I apologize. I have a delay on Zoom.
Want to say anything, Tom?
I do. Yeah, so a couple of things, and I appreciate your questions, trustee Chester. I'm saying that because there's two Bruces. But in any case, yeah, in any case, the, there's a couple of things here. More importantly to me is getting this accomplished. The three, standardizing three trucks at once. And it's more important to me than how we allocate budget and finances. Because I firmly believe, and I'm going to call on, on. You know, Ralph in a moment, but I think the, you know, to talk through the possibilities here. And by the way, Ralph was, is an ex-fireman as well. So he might even have some thoughts on it. But I do know, and I've been told by, by Chief Pern, it's been discussed. That if we don't order three, right? Whatever you don't order is going to take longer in getting our standardized trucks. I might point out. That it's been established, well-established, and in fact, the New York City Fire Department. Chief, chief, you know, we're talking about that as well. They standardized all their equipment so that if, if they have a chauffeur. Or a fireman in Queens. And he, let's say he was responding to something in Staten Island. It's all the same rigs. It's all the same. You know, apparatus. I think, did I lose you guys? I see Robert Wolf on there.
We can hear you.
Okay, now we're, now you're back. So I think it's, it's more important, and I think we, as I mentioned, I wanted to dig deep in your thoughts and in your heart. That I think it's important that we, from a, and I believe this, that we're morally obligated to move ahead. For the fire department, the volunteers and the residents. And it is a fact, Bruce, that we will have savings. You know, if we move ahead now as opposed to landing that at a future date in addition to getting quicker. Getting the engines, the standardized engines and apparatus in a more timely fashion. I was told that in the past. That it could take two years to get a truck. Now we have a very shortened timeframe. And a lot of analysis is done by our fire chiefs to move ahead on this. So I'm, what I'd like to do is call on Ralph. And Ralph. You were, you were looking into the different options for us. And here's one comment I'd like to make. I think. I think that it was brought up, you know, that by Terry, that the budgets are, people are looking to raise their budgets. I would like to push back on that, and if we need the money from budgets, I think we should reduce some of the other budgets for the safety of our residents. So I'd like to know, you know, and I think we can, what we need to reduce, and I've done a lot of budgets. You reduce the budget, you say we're going to reduce it by this amount, you go to each department. And you tell them what they're going to have to cut back on so that we can achieve the numbers we need to purchase these engines. Secondly, people don't understand the bonds. And how we set up a bond and how you don't have to execute on those dollars down the road. Also, the different timeframes that are associated with the various bonds. So can you, from your knowledge and your experience? Can you give an overview on some of the things that I just covered?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. First of all, thank you for pointing out my past service as a member of the Glen Cove Volunteer Fire Department. I did 10 years, 10 and a half years there, or as the Garden City Fire Department, first the other G C. Fire, the fire truck, I actually trained as a chauffeur once. And I recall that the pump panels are all different. You have, you have handles that go horizontal and vertical, gauges in different places. So the muscle memory you talked about, I think that's a real phenomenon. Of course, if you've ever traveled to an airport and had to rent a car. Light switches, windshield wipers, even radios are all in different places. When I used to travel, I was rented the same car, so I wouldn't have to re-familiarize myself with the controls of the vehicle I was driving. So there's definitely advantages to what is being attempted here. As far as bonding goes, I believe, and I checked this with Chief Pern. The trucks, we would not have to spend any cash until not only deliver the trucks. But after the fire department puts it through a workout and approve the acceptance of the vehicle. So the expenditure of cash would be 390 days plus from when the order is placed. Also, my conversation with Chief Pern, all three trucks would be built concurrently at the same time, not, not linearly. They'd be in parallel. Mrs. Wu was on the phone, the questions you sent me, Deputy Mayor. I pass them off to Treasurer Wu, who's much more experienced in bonding. And in our current financial position. So I would, I would ask you, please, if you have a specific question, if you could direct it to her. So that she doesn't have to correct me when I say something incorrectly.
Yeah, what I'm most interested in is. Before you execute on the bond. Am I correct that you don't have to, you know, you have the choice of, of spending the money or not spending the money?
Yeah, so the bond, the bond that was on the agenda two weeks ago and the bond that's on tonight's agenda are exactly the same except for the date change. To accommodate the new agenda date. I believe the bond was for $3.3 million. What you should know about a bond is that the three, when you bond money from the markets. You have to put in the full value of the asset or assets you're purchasing. But in the case of this bond, since we already have 929,020 allocated for one engine. The actual bond will only be to borrow about 2 point, whatever the difference is between 3.3, 2.4, 2.1 million dollars. So the bond itself, though, for the, for transparency and information sakes, it's required. That you list the full value, even though you might not be borrowing that full value. So that's really just a legal threshold that's required. So the actual borrowing would be for the difference of the two trucks. Plus, I believe the first truck is about $141,000 shy. Because the price increases and the equipment that's needed on there.
Right.
So by the way, if the board were to move forward with a single truck purchase, we would have to transfer $141,000 from contingency. And to make that purchase. So that's, that's, I think that might answer that question, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I have one more other question. I saw the audit and I think we, we have some monies that have not been used so far. That, so I was wondering, can we use those monies towards the purchase of all three?
So again, trustee Deegan was, I think, alluding to the fact that, that he didn't mention in trustee Chester's statement. It wasn't stated whether it's about operating or capital budgets or both. But we do have unspent monies in the capital budget today. That, that were considered high priority when they put into the budgets and we're working our way through those. But a lot of the budgets, for instance, like this, the repoint of this building, by the way, the scaffolding has come down. I hope somebody, everybody noticed that tonight. It was a little dark. But that budget, that budget was projected to be a $1.5 million expenditure. And when we approved it, it was about $530,000 or $40,000. So there were savings a lot of times on the anticipated budgets, capital items that could be repurposed. And we've done that, this board has done that multiple times where we needed funds. To help a project out and we took it from another capital project where the funds weren't needed. In the upcoming budget, there are, I think, the request you're going to see. Will be in the nature of 16 to 17 million dollars. But a lot of that is based on some big things like repaving of Stewart Avenue. And so there's fewer projects, but they're bigger dollar values. Again, it's a priority. What priorities do you want? You know, a road can be postponed in most cases a year or two. Because we're trying to keep to a schedule and program. But unless something has to happen, in some cases, we just do our best to plan and be proactive. So I think there's also savings on the firehouse. The firehouse that was expected to be built at Edgemere was, was placeholder at $7.5 million two budgets ago. And realistically, it's more going to be in the $11 million range when the square footage price was determined. We never got to that point, but it was going to be more expensive than indicated. You're not doing that now. So there's, there's avoidance of expend there. It's a very, you know, I, I, I don't want to try to cite every example, but these are examples of things where you're not spending money. We could repurpose it for something else.
So with, with that in mind, do we have an estimate of, of how much money is we have available now that could be utilized?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question clearly.
Based on the unspent monies, right? Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Yeah. Based on the unspent monies, what, how much money do we have available now that has not been spent roughly? If we don't have the exact number.
So that's a tricky question because the money that was, that I talked about momentarily about the $7.5 million. That was a placeholder in the next fiscal year. Which when the 7.5 was two budgets ago, with the last budget, the board lowered it to 3.5. So there was, there was a lowering of the anticipated spend by $4 million. So it wasn't money that was already allocated. It was money projected in a five-year capital plan. So it wasn't, it wasn't. It wasn't covered. Yeah, it wasn't like, only the money in this year's capital plan counts, right? But it was anticipated to be spent. We also have.
Most interested in what we can carry over to help with the expenditure if we need to.
Yeah, I'm, I, that's a more detailed budget discussion. We also have surplus, which I don't know the exact number, Mrs. Wu could attend, attend to that. But we also have a significant surplus to which we draw upon, which won't, I don't think, impact the village. Negatively because of the size of it. But again, I'm speaking above my knowledge in this area. I would again defer to Mrs. Wu if she needs to correct anything I've already said or want to add to it.
Is she online?
She's online.
Irene, Irene, could you let us know what kind of surplus we have and any other comments?
Yeah, sure. So currently, the village has in the general fund about $18 million of surplus funds. We typically maintain a hefty surplus to maintain our AAA rating as well as to set aside funds for, you know, emergencies, things that may occur. We started the prior year, you're referencing the year-end audit report, right? That was recently completed last year. So we began the year with 13 and a half million of surplus and we ended the year at 18 and a half million. So we actually saw a significant increase in our surplus fund in the general fund. So yes, if the board chooses to move forward with this investment, you have the option of, you know, paying through it. Paying for it through surplus funds or, or, or doing a combination that's, that's suggested in the, at tonight's B O T. Meeting, which is paying through cash for one truck and then financing the other two trucks.
Irene, Irene, I want to ask a simple question. So it sounds like to me there's no hardship, no financial hardship. If we were to purchase the three fire engines.
Okay, yes, that, that, that may be accurate. I would also suggest that, as Ralph mentioned. The budget presentations that will be kicked off next week also include a request of capital projects in the amount of $17 million. So just keep in mind that, you know, there's other projects that are being requested as well.
Great. I'd ask, I'd ask Ralph overseeing the overall budget that you prioritize this expenditure. Over some of the, what I consider nice to haves from the different departments that I've seen in past budgets. I also have one question for Irene. That Irene, it said 18 million now in surplus. When you were at 13 million, you still maintained the AAA rating, correct?
That's correct.
So we have a lot of wiggle room here. I recommend we put forward a vote and make this happen for, for our residents and the fire department.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I'll second the recommendation by Deputy Mayor O'Brien.
Those recommendations were to approve the, the resolution, correct?
Yes, item one.
Your second?
Yes. All opposed? Resolution fails.
Do I get two votes?
No, because this is a bond.
So are giving the chief's permission to now order this fire truck?
Can't happen that way.
No. So, all right, then explain. You voted against it. That's it.
No, we didn't vote, we voted against bonding two of them.
Yes.
Okay.
No, no, not bonding two of them, three are on the resolution, I believe, not two.
I thought it was.
There's three fire trucks. Am I reading this correctly or what?
Yes, we'll need to review it again.
Okay, so we'll do that.
Yeah, I think I mentioned this last meeting, the bond gives you authority to make the purchase. You weren't authorizing the purchase, you were authorizing the funding for the purchase. You still have to make a purchase resolution.
With that in mind, that what Ralph just said, should we do a recount of the vote?
No, you can't. No, the, the resolution fails. Because since it's a bond, it has its own criteria with regard to how many affirmative votes you have. And in this particular case, it fails.
Move on. Move on to the consent calendar?
On to the consent calendar.
Anyone like to remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion? Not? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Go in favor? Consent calendar approves. Let's move on to non-agenda items.
No, you can't get there yet, Mr. Mayor. Yeah.
That's.
I heard you. Mr. Mayor, at this point in time, I believe it is necessary that we suspend the rules with regard to placing an item on the agenda. And the necessity of that is to accommodate the expended, to accommodate the income that came from Chubb Insurance Company. In the amount of $253,499.04. Which is presently in the revenue account. And therefore it has to be moved in order to get it into a. The account for the senior center for the repair. So my first resolution is to suspend the rules with regard to the agenda of which we need to vote on.
Have a motion? One?
I'll second.
Go in favor?
I, second. The second is the resolution to actually move the funds. From the revenue account until the, and into the maintenance senior recreation center account. In order that a purchase order can be issued.
Motion?
I'd move.
Seconds?
Second.
Go in favor?
I.
Motion passes.
Just so that the residents are aware of, while a contract has been issued. The mere issuance of the contract is not sufficient to move forward. Because unless you get a purchase order from the village, you do not get paid. So that is the reason why this entire exercise was required.
Thank you, Bruce. This time we finish with the consent calendar? No? We have another one? That's the library, right?
And there is one more item that has to be resolved. And that was as discussed by Mr. Swazi. That had to do with item number five in order that the renovation costs. And the capital budget were in sync, that it is necessary to move $24,000. To raise the capital budget cost to $1,322.7, $768.
Six twenty-four.
Six twenty-four, six twenty-four. Let me just do it one more time. So I don't get yelled at by Karen. That the purpose here is to move the $24,000, bringing the total. So I don't get yelled at by Karen. That the purpose here is to move the twenty-four thousand dollars, bring in the total up from the amount of to the amount of once that one million, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
I'm sorry, this is wrong. Did the typo, six twenty-four?
Six twenty-four.
Sorry.
Okay. You'll get the numbers right, Karen. I'm certain of it. And the purpose of that is, and also to approve the, uh, submission of the proposal by Intellect with regard to the installation of the video server surveillance equipment at the library for the cost of ten thousand, six ninety-five point seventy. I so move.
Second?
Second.
Go in favor?
I.
Motion passes.
No problems.
Now we're finished with the consent calendar. And I'm moving forward now to any citizen comments on non-agenda items. Any non-agenda items, please?
Yes, Stephen Gray, forty-four April Avenue. I'm assuming this is a non-agenda item. Perhaps it is not. There has been colloquy among the board concerning the raises that were passed at the last meeting. I'd just like a little clarification on a couple of things. The employees that got these increases in salary. Who are these? Is this all the employees? Or is this a particular kind or group of employees?
The simple statement is that it was the executive staff. I believe there was eleven in total. Of those eleven in total, none of them had had a raise for between three and a half to in excess of four years. And contrary to what has been alluded, the salaries of the executive staff are all public knowledge. So there's no secret agenda. So you can go online.
Okay, but I want to know a definition as to who it was and who it applies.
The executive staff.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly, sir.
Okay, another question, uh, along the same lines. Is, is this the way that the village in effect looks at and passes raises? In other words, they're given to this group as a group as opposed to dealing with them as individuals? What is the custom and practice that the village follows?
The custom and practice just depends on the individual board because it is only the board that has the authority to raise or increase the salary. Uh, my experiences going back to nineteen ninety, uh, nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and one were different than the experiences that I had here. I cannot tell you what happened in the interim uh, during the three and a half to four years that no raises were given to the executive staff.
Okay, and are they, in this case, they were given, for lack of a better, better word, as a block to all of them? Is that, is that right?
No, because salaries can only be given to an individual. So what happened is there was a determination made with regard to the increases in the salaries because all of the executive staff have different salary structures.
And they got a percentage raise, which was across the board?
No, it was not across the board. It, while it may have appeared close because of the longevity of time, uh, it was not the same amount to each individual.
Okay, well, but maybe I'm not making myself clear. So these were in effect looked at and passed to this particular group of these eleven people. Is, is that correct?
You're using it as a group. Now, the executive staff is a defined group versus a collective bargaining unit or whatever else. So if you are a member of a collective bargaining unit, your salary is dependent on the raise that is negotiated for that unit. So if you saw recently in the, uh, Newsday, when Nassau County Police Department uh, had a contract, they had, I believe it was a seven-year contract and there was an incremental percentage raise for each one of the years in that contract. That is not what occurs with the executive staff. So their salary is separately determined and their raises were separately determined, not as a group, but on an individual basis.
But it seems to me that the increases were determined to be across the board as a group predicated on a percentage as opposed to looking at them individually based on merit.
That is absolutely correct. Well, that's absolutely correct.
In other words, if they don't like it, it's tough. Is that correct? If they thought that they did a really good job and were titled to more than this percentage, what is their redress? If they're not union employees, aren't they supposed to be treated as individuals in terms of their merit?
Well, let's just put it to you this way.
My father was a union, was a vice president for the Hotel Trades Council for the City of New York. So I know something about how union contracts are negotiated. This obviously is not a union contract.
I'm not sure what your question is. However, the difficulty with the positions of the executive staff is that as they are not members of the union or any union, their salary is dependent upon the determination of the board of trustees as to what income or increase in salary they will get. I can tell you that once the compensation was approved by the board, I don't recall hearing any complaints.
Well, I was here at the last meeting and I didn't hear any discussion of, uh, pertaining any individuals as to what they were supposed to get. Was that done?
No, there was not done individually. Okay, we, we, we had the salaries that were posted that, uh, trustee Torino um, put forth in August, um, and then emailed us again in November. The percentage increases were pretty similar.
Okay.
That, that's the bottom one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, hi, Mary Maguire, sixty-seven Kingsbury Road. I have a question on that same topic that, um, trustee Torino brought up. I wasn't going to come tonight, but when I went, I went to look at last few weeks, last month's agenda. And when I saw everyone's salary posted, I was kind of like horrified and I look around the table and I don't just see faces and wonderful workers, I actually see dollar signs of how much and I can't erase that from my mind. So my plea is just if you're going to do that again, I mean, I'm a trustee of the library and we always, anything that has to do with salaries, it just goes into executive session automatically. So I know a few of you stated that, um, thought also. But just in the future, maybe that could be a policy. I'm not here to make your policy for you, but, um, it's just important. I know it's freedom of information. I could have found out their salaries if I wanted to, but it was just there glaring in front of me in print. Okay, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Finneran, three oh one Frank, good, good evening, gentlemen. Uh, did, before this meeting, I was over at the Nassau County Planning Commission that had a hearing tonight uh, that eventually got to, uh, uh, got to Las Vegas Sands and the, and the potential development. It continues to be very obvious that, that the sands is a very well-financed, uh, effort. They are incredibly sophisticated. Uh, the, the, uh, the attendance, of course, was very similar to, to what we saw over at, uh, Hofstra. Uh, there were probably a couple hundred of gentlemen and, and women from the building, uh, construction trades. Uh, the only reason I'm getting up here, folks, is to, uh, implore us to continue to work hard. Uh, is those who are against the, uh, uh, ca- casino there, uh, at, at the Coliseum. Um, and I know that, that the board took that action and, uh, by unan- by unanimity, uh, against the, the casino there. One interesting, so I would say that we have to go the next step, whatever it is, uh, contacting mayors, uh, close by, uh, far away. Uh, there was one woman who I saw, I had to leave early, uh, because I wanted to attend here. There was one a citizen from Manhasset who got up and she was incredibly articulate, uh, in her opposition, and I know that there is a group here. Um, finally, uh, it, it, you know, they, they talk about eighty-five hundred jobs. They, they, they talk about, you know, what, what it's going to do for, uh, uh, for the surrounding villages, taxes. Uh, but we are, we're faced with a, with a huge fight. So my only message is we have to continue to push, push. We need some leadership here. We've had some, there's, there's leadership in the village too, but, uh, there's no time to waste.
No, there isn't, Ed. You're, you're right. And we need to, uh, implore the, uh, county legislator. Ours is Laura Schaefer and the, um, chief of the Nassau County Legislature, Rich Nicalello. All right. Legislature is going to vote to allow the transfer of lease. So at the very least, that's what we need to do now. Go. Right.
Ed, Ed, let me, let me add something. I, I've been in touch with all the mayors surrounding this project. We're all in agreement. We don't want this to happen. Right? This would be a terrible situation for Garden City, especially eastern portion of our village. Um, I have a meeting tomorrow with Don Clavin to discuss further what to do about this potential rezoning of our village. Um, and again, this is a very serious matter because the state could actually overrule our zoning. And it's really a serious issue. The, the business department's put together a whole map of all the village properties that could potentially be developed. And it's a very comprehensive map, but I think both, uh, Deputy Commissioner, uh, Carone and, and Juvenello put together this map. And, uh, you have free access to it. It should be on the village website, I hope. Surely, but it shows all the areas that can be potentially developed. The goal for a HOKO is to build eight hundred thousand units of housing in a ten-year period. It's eighty thousand units a year within a half mile of any commuter rail station. So it is a very serious issue. It would transform Nassau County immediately. Nassau County has no really available land for development. And, and Garden City is a prime target. And I'll fight to the end.
Absolutely. And, uh, the mayor is right. The mayors are adamantly against it. Trustee Flanagan and I were at a meeting uh, of the Nassau County Mayors and Villages Association, and they were adamantly against the, the HOKO land grab and began here the, uh, opposition to the, to the casino as well.
Come on up.
A couple of the labor guys, uh, both over at, um, Hempstead and at, um, at the, uh, Theodore Roosevelt Building and every one of them, let me, this is a tiny sample, that, that found out that if it, that, that I was in Garden City, of course, opposed it because of its proximity. They said, you know, we understand that. We, we understand the way you feel about personally being, you know, impacted in, in such an intimate way. So it's just a little irony there.
But let me just take another point. The building trades don't care if they're building housing. We're building a casino. As long as they're building, they're happy. So let's build a different kind of project, maybe, right? It'll be more beneficial for all the communities. That's the goal. I think it's a better way of approaching it than coming up with a concept where the lynchpin is a casino.
To- totally. And, and there are going to be three licenses awarded. So there's going to be work at three locations anyway. So.
I'm not so worried about the trades councils. Thank you.
Good evening. I can, uh, attest to the, uh, crowd at, uh, the Theodore Roosevelt Building this afternoon, this morning, this morning, this evening. Um, it was extensive. It was about, um, as best I could tell, about ninety-five percent union delegates and union representatives, et cetera. To that point, I got the opportunity to speak. Um, I put my name in and I spoke for myself. Um, I don't know how, but I only put my name down. And, um, somebody said, uh, excuse me, the co-chairman, when I got up, he said, hi, Mr. Williams, I'm Garden City. I don't know how he knew that. I didn't know anybody there, but somehow they knew who I was. So that's, I found that interesting. I spoke to them about the process and the process of referring this, this lease transfer over to something, uh, from another set of initials, OSPEC, which stands for Open Space Parks Advisory Committee. And, uh, so that referral over, they have to do some work. That work's supposed to be extensive, is supposed to be environmental and all kinds of good things, whether it occurs or not. In the past, it hasn't. It's been, we took the word of, uh, the applicant and that was enough and it gets referred back. What was interesting to me was the chairman, or the co-chairman, uh, Mr. Greenfield, he, uh, after I spoke, he spoke to me again and he explained again the process. And he reiterated the fact that everything, even though it will go from OSPEC back to the, uh, uh, back to the planning commission, who either one, neither one of has, has power, if you will, it goes then to the, uh, legislature. They in turn turn it over to our friends at the town of Hempstead. And he dumped it very much on the doorstep of the town of Hempstead to do whatever they're supposed to do. So I found that terribly interesting. Um, I don't know if that's a political cover issue. I don't know.
No, that's, that's accurate because what the, what the town Hempstead governs is the zoning of that site.
I, I understand.
And you cannot change the zoning of that site with a variance.
Um, I.
There has to be an amendment to the zoning and, and the town of Hempstead has to apply for that change.
I understand that.
But Mr. Clavin, there's a lot of pressure on him.
Um, continuing what, uh, what Mr. Finneran said, um, uh, later on, there was a very elegant spokesperson from the Uniondale and she was apparently Haitian in my guess.
Pearl Jacobs.
Sorry?
Pearl Jacobs.
Is that her name?
Yes, I know her.
Yes. And she spoke quite elo- eloquently about, um, that the commission ought to act like adults. And, yeah, and she just put them in her pla- in her place and told them they ought to act like adults and not, and understand that uh, with casinos comes bad stuff. And that was terribly interesting to me. On the, uh, the, the one thing that was obvious to me is there were very few, i- if, if, if any, I don't think there were any, anyone from the villages, any of the villages around, Westbury, Uniondale, nobody spoke in opposition. Nobody. You, you alluded to that. Everybody's against it. Nobody spoke about it. And there is a political influence that has to be made to play, I think. Um, whatever urgency we need to, uh, bring forward, we need to bring it forward quickly. Uh, if there are in fact five, six, seven, ten communities, you ought to dump it on, forget just Laura Schaefer. Everybody involved in the process, everybody, planning commission, Blake, uh, uh, Bruce rather, uh, Blake. Um, and on and on and on. And, uh, followed up, I don't know if you all saw what New Hyde Park said about how HOKO's little game and how they put some signage up, uh, opposing it. And they're taking a step that New Hyde Park does not want that HOKO planning.
I think, uh, all of the communities in Nassau and Suffolk County are opposed to it. And I think any community that supports this concept.
I, I think, I, I, that's clear. It goes all the way out to, uh, uh.
This doesn't make sense.
Way out.
You know, we have certain rights that we've had for hundreds of years, right, to control our own zoning and our own landscape. And I don't think anybody's going to give that up.
I, I, I agree with you.
They go to the Supreme Court.
My only, my only suggestion is that if there's not a unity in all these communities, they'll separate us.
Well, there is. And even if it's not spoken publicly, it's, we, I've been having conversations with mayors and, and Pearl Jacobs especially. She supports our position.
Well, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please come up. State your name. I think I know who you are.
Probably at this time, yes. Kathleen Oro for Maryland, you know, and, and I apologize because I think what I'm going to ask is very insignificant in comparison to all the other discussions. But I'm just very curious. Uh, obviously I do not take the train to New York City, nor did I bother to go up on the platform after the snow. I was wondering, did the generators work to heat the snow and make it eliminate?
I have no idea.
I don't know, Kathy.
Did you walk up there and I thought it was in my mind?
One thing for sure, in Stewart Manor Station, there's no heating system. So it's very dangerous.
Well, I did see, and I presume they were MTA workers who were shoveling the sidewalk, um, just, well, on the ground level. I didn't, you know, watch if they were up there, which in years gone by, I've seen them with this, this snowplow. I was just curious because after that ugly edifice stairs that is constantly, if it was working. All right.
Didn't, didn't get a chance to try it. I was going to take it to training that day, so I could let you know, but I didn't. So I'll look into it.
Missed your chance, Bruce.
I know I did.
Thank you.
I know, Cap.
Any other comments from the audience? Any other comments from the audience?
As you so eloquently put it, um, my comments are insignificant, but I really wanted to speak tonight. I wanted to thank Bruce Chester, Charlie Kelly, and Mary last week at the last board meeting for looking into my off-peak parking permits. And I thank you for pushing it forward. I'm looking forward to getting the permit. And Karen came through with a very good suggestion. And I was wondering if in two weeks, we could follow up on that to see where it stands. I'm anxious to go into the city, as you can see. One other comment I'd like to make is the comment that Mr. Fennerin made. You both attended a meeting tonight. My husband and I have been on the Nassau County website to try to figure out when the legislators, legislatures are meeting to hand over the lease. We, we want to be part of that, but we can't find anything on it. Everything is buried in different sections. Can the village post something so we're aware of meetings? Because we would have definitely have gone tonight.
There's not a lot of information out there. It's hard to find. It really is. And, and in fact, I've asked for even a site plan, right? Bruce Blakeman. It falls on deaf ears. They're not going to release anything. The Sands is very tight-lipped.
Well, that was very obvious at the meeting last night at the casino when my husband asked the pointed question. Has Sands spoken to you, Hofstra? Because they're supposed to be doing outreach and they said nothing, which leads us to believe what is really going on here.
Hard to find out. We'll try our best.
And, um, I was very much interested in the pictures of the, the spur that you presented, I understand. Don't they understand that the MTA controls that property and they really can't do anything about it? But as a community, what can we do? Because you were indicating that you saw some building going on. And that really concerns me.
One of the requests I've made to DPW and the building department is to determine with regard to the presentation by Nassau County on the Clinton Road renovation, whether they have decided to do anything with regard to the roadway north of Commercial to where the railroad tracks are. It turns out that anytime you have a railroad that goes over a roadway, a grade roadway, you have to actually have a submission to the FRA, which is the Federal Railway Administration, since there are no, and we've seen it on Franklin Avenue in which you have the poles going up and everything else. One of the comments that I made to County Executive Blakeman was that at Herrick's Road, after they had that tragic accident and they built the overpass. That overpass was built to accommodate three tracks. On Mineola Boulevard, which is where my office is, I watched the overpass be built. And I said, they're building this for three tracks. Now, one is forty years ago, when they decided to build a bridge that had, that could take three tracks. And the other one is twenty-five years ago, when I had my office still there, that took three tracks. For an agency that is complaining of poverty to redo a track bed on a spur, I feel that they're treating me like a mushroom. So.
No, there's no respect for the public. They don't care. Railroad does not care. They do what they want to do. And the MTA will snowplow it and we'll have a train going through, you know.
Well, part of the, the idea is to find out and to make an application to the FRA to see if in fact there has been any plans and or thoughts of putting a grade crossing there. And that would be breadcrumbs that will tell us what in fact somebody may intend to do.
There's also no grade crossing on Washington where it crosses, um, yeah, Washington, when it goes over there by St. James. So it's really, I don't trust them. That's why I moved to Garden City. So because I lived in Belrose Village when they were starting that their track nonsense years ago. I looked at the village. I said, this is going to compromise the way I live. My house was on Delaware Road, one block away from Superior. And that train goes right by Superior Road. And I saw what they were going to do and it forced me to relocate to Garden City. The best thing I did when I moved here was not move close to the railroad. But I'm still very much involved with them because they, they drive me crazy. And I appreciate all the hard work that Bruce has done with just getting them to plant trees to baffle the lights. We have to keep the pressure up.
But Bruce wasn't the only one planting trees.
I saw you digging too.
Yes.
Oh, I mean, everyone was.
I was up to my knees in, in mud when I was picking up the trees.
And, and I really think, you know, when we had those towers go up, those poles, those hideous poles, where was the town of Hempstead backing us? They weren't there, so they are not going to back us.
That was in everybody in the bin.
They are not going to back us, so we really have to be strong.
Yeah.
And I applaud the board for doing the right thing with this. So if you could let us know when these meetings happen, I'll be more than happy to go there.
You'll be the first one we call.
Just like I'm getting my permit, I'm online for the first permit.
You'll be, you'll be the first permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
I can just offer, sorry, I can just offer.
You only left three times. You know that.
Sorry, I can offer some information about what she just asked. There, the Open Space Parks Advisory Committee has a meeting on the seventh, I believe it's at, at Eisenhower Park, and I believe it's at four o'clock. And there's another one, I think it's the ninth, I believe, at ten o'clock. That can be checked out. Secondly, I'm just told that there is a meeting tomorrow in Hempstead, a mayor's meeting.
Yes.
Are you aware of that? Okay, is, is somebody, are we going?
I'm going.
Oh, good. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, that's, that's unusual. Thank you.
Why?
That's it? Any, any other comments?
We have, um, Jane on Zoom. You've had her hand, you've had your hand up for quite a while. Jane? Jane, do you still want to speak? You have had your hands up for quite a while.
Jane fell asleep.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Jane.
Hi, I'm sorry. Um, the question is regarding the transient renters that were mentioned before. I wanted to know if the town or the village permits residents to rent rooms by the night on social websites, Verbo or Airbnb?
Whether the village allows transient rental rooms by the night.
Yeah, that's yours.
Hello?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get an answer to you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Currently, no specific ordinance that deals with that. And we're looking at that and earlier in the evening, I mentioned that we are looking at this and will need some more input from the board to try to finalize some of the points that might go into such an ordinance, but we're looking at it.
Okay.
Because it's going on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Vassalotti?
Thank you, Robert Vassalotti, thirty-two Brixton. Of course, I need to speak about the Maryland area. And again, I'd like to thank so many of you who've been involved with making it happen, you know, from engineering and financing and just time out there. Bruce, yourself, with everyone, so many nights and so many times. But there's some situations that I think we just need to address right now. And I guess the first question is, do we have any schedule on when paving is going to happen? From Pratt.
How you doing, Mr. Vassalotti? We are scheduled to begin paving in the springtime. As the weather allows us to do so.
Okay, so with that in mind, um, I understand that, you know, we have to be careful of, um, snow and, and things like that. But that means that there could be several more weeks of temporary parking. And my point is that it's getting a little dangerous right now on some of the side streets, namely Houston and Wellington, where we have double rows of cars parked because they can't park in the parking lots. Now, I'm all for this project. But currently, I mean, I watch what happens. The bus can't even turn down Houston. Well, they'll turn down Houston, but then cars trying to come the other way have to literally back up, you know, hundreds of feet to try to let the bus come through in the afternoon and things like that. Even everyday drivers, if you try to come down Houston heading south, you have to try to negotiate someone else coming, you know, north. And there could be twelve cars and it's just a tremendous distance to try to get through and negotiate with cars on both sides. So all I'm saying is that I know it's a temporary situation because of the parking lots not being paved and, and the signage not being in place, and that's to be expected. But can we do something, and I guess I'm addressing this Commissioner Jackson, to put some temporary signage so that maybe there's no parking on one side of Houston and Wellington so that you don't have this problem of, you, you really just can't get past at times. It's, it's really dangerous. So it, it seems to affect Houston, Wellington, Roxbury a little bit. And if we were to put temporary signage, I would recommend that we leave the side with the fire hydrants as open area and allow them to park on the other side, you know, just for the remaining few weeks. I, I guarantee if you ask the bus drivers or the, or this, you know, the, uh, school board, they'll be complaining about it because it's pretty dangerous when the buses come around.
I'll, I'll definitely take a look with Commissioner Jackson. It's possible I could reach out to the contractor and have him put down some temporary pavement markings for this, for the existing parking stalls. We'll definitely take a look at that.
Yeah, that might be a good solution, actually. Get them off the street altogether with some temporary, even before the final paving. Because I've seen one or two cars already, you know, taking the bull by the horns and just parking there already. So that might not be a bad idea either. And then I'd like to just address further on that subject with Paul Blake. And Paul, you had mentioned trees being planted by Northport Trees and that if they had extras and things that towards May, they may add some of those trees, you know, along the Maryland Avenue. I'm not sure if that's an absolute definite or if they're only going to do trees or if they would also be doing shrubs.
No, this is a tree contract. It's a hundred twenty-two trees. Most of them are going in where trees were removed previously last spring and some are resident requests. There will be an additional planting, as I mentioned, in later April or May. And at that time, we'll see if we can't get a few extra trees over in the Maryland Strawberry Fields area.
Right, okay, that's what, yeah, I just wanted to hear that reiterated because it's crucially important that we get tall trees, both deciduous and or pine varieties. The taller the better because the old growth that was taken out was pretty dramatic. And again, it's over four years now that we're still, you know, waiting for the recovery of this area. So I thank you guys, once again, keep the pressure on for the finalization of this project. And we all look forward to a new Station Plaza area that we can enjoy for years to come and residents can be happy, you know, parking there and maybe, you know, walking their dogs down along the, the side there of Maine and of course using the station properly and the crosswalks and things. So thank you very much for all the efforts on this and it's been difficult.
Thank you, Robert. Any other people on Zoom, Karen? That's it? Okay. Anybody else in the audience, questions? It's time I like to finish. We finish, close the meeting. Do you have a motion?
I'm sorry, Karen. Just, just, um, for those people who live in the east around Clinton Road, there's been a lot of email traffic to the board and specifically Traffic Commission Chairman Kelly is a Traffic Commission Chairman, is aware of this. But Nassau County is undertaking a study, an engineering study of the section of Clinton south of the train tracks for Commercial Avenue and north of Meadow Street. There's a meeting this coming Monday, March sixth, at seven PM at the Garden City Casino. The public is welcome. Nassau County will be presenting to the board members who are able to attend regarding the alternatives designs they have available for that road and want to, and they're at thirty percent. They want to get buy-in from the public and the board as to which alternative to proceed with, to a hundred percent so that they can, we can talk about commencing construction implementation of the new road design. So it's Monday, March sixth, at the Casino, seven PM.
Thanks, Ralph.
You're welcome, sir.
Is there anything else? Saying none, I ask for a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion. We close the meeting.
All in favor? Meeting is closed.